Good evening. I'm going to call the May 24 regular meeting of the Town Board to order. Will the Clerk please call the rule? Councilmember Moskowitz?
Present.
Councilmember Delarada?
Here.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Here.
Councilmember Brennan?
Here.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Here.
Thank you. Let's please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to take a moment to reflect on the 10 victims of the hate-inspired mass shooting in Buffalo. Unfortunately, these tragic hate crimes seem to be more frequent and more deadly. The first in my memory was in Los Angeles, August 1999, when a shooter brazenly walked into the North Valley Jewish Community Center, where 250 children were playing outside, and opened fire. The receptionist, a camp counselor, and three boys were wounded, and later a post office worker was fatally shot. I distinctly remember watching the TV footage of children being whisked out of the building by police officers. And now more recently, I can recall the 2015 shooting at the Emmanuel African Methodist Church in Charleston, South Carolina, in which nine black parishioners were killed; to the 2018 Tree of Life synagogue shooting, in which 11 Jewish congregants were killed; to the 2019 hate-inspired mass shooting at a Walmart in El Paso, Texas, that left 22 people dead and 23 people wounded; to the 2021 shooting in an Atlanta, Georgia spa targeting Asian-Americans, in which eight people were killed, six of whom were women, in what was believed to be inspired by anti-Asian sentiment; and to the most recent mass shooting until this evening, in Buffalo, in which 10 people were killed and three were injured, also inspired by hate. And now tonight, we are learning about a shooting at an elementary school in Texas, in which 14 children were killed and one teacher. This is a community that should stand against violence and choose love. And I pray that we follow that path. Let us please observe a moment of silence. And now, I would like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the April 26, 2022 regular Town Board meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes from the April 26 meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any changes to those minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The minutes are approved. We will now move on to the privilege of the floor.
Linda Rizzo, 2229 Fairlawn Parkway. I do agree with you Supervisor Puccioni that we should always choose love over hate. That's very important. But in my recent email to the Town Board, which was of yesterday, there were things going on in Niskiuna where love was not chosen. And I know that you can quip and say, oh, it's only the internet, it's only Twitter. But I'm going to tell you that one Twitter account called Niski Fails had a lot of hate in it over the last three months, to a point that even people that were following it were disgusted. And they just said, there's some obsession going on here about various people. So it would have been very refreshing, as you're taking notes on what I'm saying Supervisor, that maybe the Board should have come out and said, we do not support any account that attacks people personally rather than addressing issues. But that matter, I think of Niski Fails, will be resolved in a matter of a couple of weeks. You know, when you have a campaign and people say, they ask the question at national level or state level, are you better off now than you were four years ago or two years ago? Well, we can ask that here. Are we better off now than we were a year ago in the town of Niskiuna? And I will say that some residents say no, we are not. Why? Excuse me Supervisor, are you taking my words down or are you listening to what I'm saying? Because I'm speaking and you know, you'd like to have a face contact, not somebody writing. You have a good memory, you have a PhD like I do, you can remember everything I said and jotted down after the meeting. Some people will say, are we better off now or are we better off a year ago? We're not better off now, and I'll tell you why. We heard audit, audit, audit. Finances are bad. Oh, it's a disaster what they're doing, the Board is doing, they're spending money. One person used the term like drunken sailors. Well, there's been no audit, not a word. Then we hear, we're awash in fund balance. Well, if you're awash in fund balance, why aren't we hearing that you're going to reduce our taxes? Because by state law, you have to do that. You have to use that money to reduce our taxes, not to spend it on pet projects. We haven't heard a word about it. And I have been told we're awash in fund balance. Then we heard process, process. Oh, there's no process, no process. We all agreed, many of us that were duped are now unduped. But what I mean, I don't know if there's a word unduped, but I'm coining it. So those of us that were duped are no longer duped. Process? What process? There's been none. You've hired four positions, okay? And this is not about the people that fill them. I'm not critiquing that. I'm critiquing, quote, process. No process for the town attorney hired, no interview, nothing. No process for the controller, who we heard a lot about and everybody wanted a search, no process for that. No process at all happened when you hired the on-call attorney for $190 an hour. Yet, when Mr. Delarada voted no and asked why we weren't interviewing, you said Supervisor Puccioni, it's going to be a matter of weeks we're going to have post that job. I don't know, has it been posted? Maybe I missed something. Then we hired, you know, the human resource firm. Didn't interview, didn't look to see, would we be better going with a law firm? Would we be better going here? We just hired it, no process. Then we hired a secretary in your office. Now, I know that is your choice. I know that. But there wasn't anyone in Town Hall, you're brand new, that you could have put in that position for $50,000 plus, given a promotion to? I guess not. So, no audit, no process on any of those things. Now, I want to know personally, why? Why? Why are you hiring people and at the same time yelling about process last year, which was the big campaign slogan, and now there's none? And when someone asks someone who is very concerned about process, well, they're qualified people, that's the answer now. So you see, rules for thee, but not for me. That's what's going on here. And you know, I've gotten up at this podium and I have disagreed with Board members, even former Board members who sat up here with their policy. I've done it in the open. I don't hide in the shadows. But I will tell you, this thing about love Supervisor Puccioni is not happening in this town. And I can say this as a Democratic Committee person tonight. We are now primaring Committee people. And you are primaring Committee people. Now, should a Supervisor of a town be involved in that? Since you are a Supervisor for every resident in this town and you're primaring people that carried your petitions. Now, I believe in an open, I do believe in open government. I believe that we should have open government. But this isn't about open government, this is really about a power grab. And a lot of people who believed, oh, this might be good, and I can tell you, there's more people than I can count on my hands that have spoken to me about this, who thought, oh, this is good, were duped. And they say it now. Excuse me, we were duped.
Thank you. You've exceeded your time.
You know what? I will. But I will also say this, I've heard people up here that you allowed to talk about the birds and bees and not low mo or high mo, and you didn't say that. I sat here when you passed a resolution and had people get up, you had 100 people here, they went on for 10 or 15 minutes. I know you don't like what I'm saying, but I really think you should be more involved in town politics as it benefits the resident and not petty Democratic Party politics. That's all I have to say. And I'm not the only one that feels that way. Believe me, I'm not. There's a growing number of people that are disgusted because now they're saying, what we were told probably 60% were lies. And I hope that Mr. Delarada, who is sitting there, he voted no on the $190 attorney. I hope that from now on, when positions come up, he stands firm and votes no if there's no interview and no process. Because make no mistake, we are hiring friends of friends. I know who they're friends of, but I don't get up and mention names. See, I'm concerned about issue, not destroying people. Have a wonderful evening.
Still there. My name is Thomas Hodgkins, I live in Niskiuna. Two things, I looked over the meeting packet briefly. I, finance guy, so I looked at the budget modifications and there's, I don't know, there's like a donation of a couple hundred dollars and then there's increase in spending of a couple hundred dollars and there's just no explanation. I don't know what's going on. I mean, I used to create finance documents for politicians and you should, for the public. And these finance documents, they don't provide any information. You've got to provide some context. What's going on? What's the story? What does it mean? You can't just produce a chart with numbers going back and forth. What's that all about? Simple explanation is, would go a long way on these things. Okay, so I support the movement by the Town Historian and others to remove the seal. I believe it is indeed racist and sexist. You have two men on it. If you look at the outline in Niskiuna, the town, what color is it? It's white. There is no history in Niskiuna of peaceful coexistence of the, coexistence of two equal societies. It's one of removal and genocide, cultural genocide and actual genocide. That's the story of Europeans coming to America and removing the native, the First Nation peoples. There is no peaceful coexistence. This is just a fiction. It's, some might say, oh, it's, it's a fiction, right? So I was going to read some, an old book, Indian History for Young Folks. I'm going to read just a paragraph. It's, it's old, so it has an older perspective. And, but I think it's, this is a book that was probably taught in Niskiuna schools and read by people. Indian History for Young Folks by Francis Drake.
What's the name of it?
Indian History for Young Folks by F.S. Drake. And this is white man. And you can tell from the first picture that it's incredibly racist. And this is incredibly offensive language I'm about to read.
I will stop you there. I am going to mute you if you do that.
It's important to understand.
I will stop you there if you do that.
Okay, that's, that's fair. But I think you need to understand that this-
I understand.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Think that this town was built on racism and removal of this-
A lot more places than this town were. You're correct, okay? Not just the town of Niskiuna.
It's not, no, it's not.
Are we going to solve this problem tonight?
Well, okay, so get rid of it, right? First step. Then you have a contest. Design a new seal and let everybody vote on it. I don't think you should form a committee. Not a political committee, you just open it up to everybody.
It's a great idea, but it's not really practical.
You, you design a contest and have everybody vote on it. You could, no, you could, you could do it online, you could do it, but I think you could do, you could do that. Or you could do randomly selected committee instead of a politically appointed one. That way you get a broader number of perspectives that would impact on-
The committee was chosen by the Town Historian. He recommended those individuals. It's not politically motivated or in any way.
Again, again, you have a very, very, I don't know what's going on here, I haven't looked at who is in it. But when you do something like that, it's a very, you get a very limited number of people, a very limited number of perspective on things. And normally, and if you look at the types of people and the perspectives they represent, it's very limited compared to the overall diversity of the town. So you're not going to represent, it's not going to reflect the perspectives of the town when you have a committee like that.
The resolution clearly states that additional voices will be included in the conversation, community residents, indigenous peoples, scholars, religious representatives.
Good, good. But I think you need to get rid of it and move forward and make it an open process that's open to everybody. And everybody open up to, people could submit their designs and let everybody vote on it. And I think you'll have a much better process in general than assigning to a small committee. Thank you.
Hello. Nice to see you all tonight. I appreciate the very difficult time we're having right now in the country. And this is a personal issue, it feels pales in comparison to the weight of what's happening.
Would you state your name?
Yes. Hello, my name is Patricia Doyle, I live at 2279 Graham Boulevard. I, I'm here to discuss a garage that was approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals on April 27, 2022. My family and I have lived in Niskiuna since 2014, our two children graduated from Niskiuna High School. I've been on the PTO and on the Board of NCAP. We've had a friendly relationship with our neighbors, the guests, who are, their garage was approved. My husband, Matt Wood, and Mr. Guest have had long conversations in our yard on a regular basis. We've tried to be considerate, friendly neighbors. For example, when we first moved into the house, we put up a cedar lattice top fence that Mr. Guest told us his wife, Christie, loved it and they were not expecting something so nice. Previous to that fence, there was no fence or wall or structure of any kind. I also recently gave a glowing recommendation for his daughter in late March of 2022 for her application to the Police Department of the Town of Niskiuna. So when we received the notice from the town about a variance request for a garage on the side yard setback, we were confident that our neighbor, Mr. Guest, would tell us if it would be affecting us. We thought that may be not likely because he has a half acre. He already has a garage on his property. He has large areas with no neighbors. We're the only area on our side that has a house next to it. We never heard a word from Mr. Guest either before we received the notice around April 20, April 17th or afterwards. He did not contact us in any way. We did not hear a single word from Mr. Guest. In fact, he seemed to be ignoring us. So on Saturday, April 23rd, about five days after we received the notice, my husband texted Mr. Guest to ask him where the garage would be located. Mr. Guest texted back that it actually would be located next to our house, five feet from the property line and 13 feet away from our house. We were shocked, shocked that our formerly friendly neighbor would not mention anything about his project to us. And we had to seek him out to discover his plan. We were upset because, one, we felt betrayed by our formerly friendly neighbor; two, we couldn't understand why he would choose to place a structure next to our house when he has a very large property. He has several other site options for this. And three, we found it hard to comprehend the size of the structure or the need for it. It's 38 by 28 and it's actually 26.1 feet tall. So it's very large, it's about as large as the houses on either, either side of it. My house is about 28 feet and it's going to be 26.1 feet. So we went to, we went to Town Hall on, on April 28th. Oh, we planned our neck, for the next few days, oh, this is very important. So we hardly slept for several days afterwards, we had headaches and were severely stressed. We planned for the next few days our response for the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. We went to Town Hall on Thursday, April 28th and found the doors locked. We rechecked the notice and realized that the meeting was scheduled for the day before on Wednesday, April 27th. As we listened to Mr. Guest's taped presentation at the zoning, zoning meeting, our sense of distress deepened. Mr. Guest depicted my family as less worthy of consideration, that we were house owners, not homeowners like himself. He said that we hadn't lived there as long as he had and that we were planning to move, we're not planning to move. We have put an enormous amount of hard work and money and care into our home. We planted 60 arboride along the Van Antwerp side of our house. We've put up a cedar fence and arbor. We're very committed to our home and to our community. And we resent being depicted as less worthy of consideration than Mr. Guest is. Mr. Guest also said many statements. He said he wanted to enjoy the luxury we enjoy with having a five foot variance. We do not enjoy a five foot variance. Our 1931 home is 8.7 to 9.7 feet away from the property line. In 1931, there was no zoning variance regulation. So the, even the, the, there was no zoning variance for our property. Mr. Guest said that he went to all his neighbors with his plan. He never went to us at any time about his project and we were the most affected property owner. He never went to our neighbors who are also in the shared driveway. Mr. Guest was very vague and non-committal with his questions posed by the Zoning Variance Board. He didn't explain why he needed a two-story, 26-foot, 2100 square foot garage next to garage. He did not prove hardship by having a 21, that a need to have a 21-foot, 2100 square foot, 38 by 28-foot, two-story structure. His hardship, he was having a difficult time getting into his current garage. It was self-created because of his addition of a four-story porch two years ago. He, sorry, four-story, four-season porch two years ago. This is concerning because he actually told me he was getting permitted for a three-season porch. So in conclusion, we believe Mr. Guest purposely obscured his building plan from both my family and the other shared driveway neighbors. He did not come to us with his plans. We were left scrambling to find out details. I have had to file a FOIL request for the plans, which I received a couple of weeks ago, and that was after the variance was approved. I was emailed plans for a smaller footprint by Mr. Guest, also after the variance was granted. So that is all. Thank you very much.
I'm going to read two letters that were submitted for privilege of the floor via email. This is from Jen Semannick. There's no address listed. Dear Supervisor Puccioni and members of the Town Board, I'm writing this to be included at privilege of the floor on Tuesday at the Town Board meeting. As the proud mother of a Girl Scout, I was pleased to see how a similar group was treated at Town Hall last month. I thought it was wonderful that Supervisor Puccioni spent time during the Town Board meeting to welcome one of the Niskiuna Boy Scout troops and explain to the scouts how the meetings work and how decisions are made. I especially liked the way that Supervisor Puccioni explained the committee system and said that it took all of the Town Board members working together to make the town run. In addition, I appreciated the team approach, as collaboration is very important in scouting, and hope to see more of it in the years ahead. I thought the whole concept of having a public discussion about the virtues and vices of bonding and incurring more debt was unusual and quite promising. Since new members of the Town Board are already making such a change in the tone and content of these public meetings, I am excited about the future. The next letter is from Donald Weisenhund. There is no address. Dear members of the Town Board, I think it's great that our Supervisor is already looking for grants. That seems like a big change. I understand that our water system is very old and has many parts in serious need of repair. It would be great to see the famous water tower from the Simpsons episode get refurbished on the federal government's dime. I understood that you applied for 17 million, but even the 5 million would make a huge difference. Also, it looks like the Town Board is working together to adjust policies to deal with inflation and rising prices for supplies, like chlorine and grass seed and equipment, like trucks and buses. It's going to be a tough budget cycle and I hope that my neighbors are paying attention and that we can all be realistic about how much the town can do when supplies and equipment prices are up 10 and 15% and much more. I'm optimistic that the message will get out as Supervisor Puccioni seems like she is willing to let the people in Town Hall do their jobs and speak the truth about costs. So I do think that there will be a more honest budget cycle and that this budget won't get lost in a political happy talk. I think we all need to be ready to try to move more and to do more with less. Thank you for your leadership. Is there anyone here, anyone else who'd like to speak for privilege of the floor? Okay, let's move on to committee reports. Thank you. Police and Public Safety? Thank you Supervisor Puccioni. Can you hear me? I'm going to start off with our meeting minutes from our May 5, 2022, 3:30 PM meeting. For fleet and equipment, we still have two vehicles that are in the process of being outfitted. Chief Koshin spoke with the vendor and they're waiting for one last piece of equipment, which should be here by the end of this month. For our building, our Sallyport drain is still plugged and Charlie Brigami is still working on this issue. For training, Chief Koshin let us know that recruit Guest is continuing to progress through the academy and she's doing very well. Sergeant Brenier did assist the Zone 5 Regional Law Enforcement Academy range training from May 2nd to 13th. Officers Venna, Favada, Mora, and Sergeant Relation are completing the civilian response to active shooting events instructor training. We're hoping to get more officers to be instructors so that they can provide this training to businesses and schools in our community. Our Police Department is continuing our unit on situational awareness and law enforcement stress indicators through the Police One Academy platform. Chief- Chief Koshen trained our new officers in CPR, um, on May 15th. We have several ongoing citizen issues. We're continuing to work with Town Attorney Finan regarding the weight restriction signs around town, making sure they're all accurate. Chief Koshen's looking at traffic surveys for Clifton Park Road with increased traffic from the Knott Street project, monitoring that area during construction. And Mr. Mastriani came and spoke, Mastriani, sorry, spoke with his concerns on Wyoming Avenue, um, and he wants us to continue looking at volume and traffic on this roadway. We had some new issues brought up. David Smith is concerned about Grand Boulevard speed enforcement with the warmer weather coming, and Chief said that he was going to direct patrols to Grand Boulevard. Kristen Johnson is looking at the traffic at GE Circle, saying that, um, vehicles are not yielding correctly, and Detective Stevens sent out an email requesting, um, patrols to be patrolling the area. For town events, Officer Brian Connor went to our community day at First New York Federal Credit Union and helped out with bike, bicycle safety, gave away like free helmets and met with some kids. Drug Take Back Day was April 30th, and, um, the police department took in 283.45 pounds of drugs. And we had another 229 and a half pounds of drugs for destruction that had been collected through our take-back box, and we're looking to, um, put a take-back box possibly in our vestibule for 24-hour, um, deposits from the community if they want to. The Pedal Paddle Run event was held on May 14th, and that was a collaborative effort with the different police departments in our area. Michelle Martinelli, our town clerk, let us know that soliciting permits were going to be started, um, to be issued again as we're ending COVID. We already gave one to Mr. Dingling and Kona Ice, and other permits are being processed right now. Clerk Martinelli also let us know that she was looking into solicitation signs for people to possibly have at their home that would indicate if they would not want to solicit her to be on their property. Scotia, the town of Scotia, or Village of Scotia, actually, um, has a very comprehensive program. It's in their town code, so Attorney Finan's looking into that with, um, with Martinelli so that we can maybe implement something like that in our town if citizens would like notification on their homes. Judge Swinton stated that the Schenectady County centralized arraignment began Monday, May 9th. There's going to be a rotation of judges on, on an on-call system, and the goal is to not have anyone in pre-arrangement detention for longer than 12 hours. This is not going to change anything operationally for Niskuna Police Department. For the school district, we're continuing to monitor traffic due to the Knott Street project and with the Capitol project the school's doing. Our website continues to be updated. Our police page has a child safety seat installation request form and a non-emergency animal report form, so, um, citizens could utilize these two resources, and this should help streamline phone calls, help people know where to go. We have two grants in the process right now for 2023, and our next meeting is June 2nd at 3:30 PM.
Thank you. Community Programs?
Thank you, Supervisor. The Community Programs Committee met on May 5th. Lori Peretti, our coordinator of Community Programs, reported that spring soccer is well underway and enrollment numbers are excellent this year. The weather to kick off the season wasn't great, but we are keeping our fingers crossed for many more of these spring and summer-like days that we've been seeing over the last couple of weeks. The driving range is now open for the season. Opening day was well attended, and we're looking forward to a busy season there as well. On behalf of the Community Programs Department, I would like to thank, uh, our Highway Superintendent Ray Smith and his Parks crews for installing safety nets and mats at the driving range, and also thanks to the Niskuna High School varsity golf team led by Coach Smith for picking the range and retrieving used golf balls from the woods around the range. These kids volunteered their time, um, and collected approximately 300 used golf balls, which definitely, uh, helps our spending and our budget, so we appreciate their, uh, their time. It is that time of year again to get the town pool up and running shortly. Uh, we received numerous applications for snack bar attendants and lifeguards. Interviews were held earlier this month, and later this evening, this board will appoint individuals to fill those positions, uh, as well as other seasonal positions and set pay rates. Pay rates are based on experience, and we are fortunate to have many of the same employees joining us for another season. Staff at the pool will begin cleaning, painting, and preparing for the pre-opening inspection. We will also be voting this evening on a resolution to approve a standard licensing agreement for use with our local sports clubs. This standard licensing agreement will be used in conjunction with the Facility Use Manual that this board adopted at a previous meeting. And the purpose behind these documents is to ensure fairness and equality between the town and the many organizations that we are proud to partner with. The farmer's market is also quickly approaching, and in tonight's packet, you'll see a resolution to set this year's dates and vendor rates. The market, which is now in its fourth season, will be open on Saturdays from 8:00 AM to noon beginning July 9th. Moving on to the senior center, Linda O'Brien reported that it's business as usual. Earlier this month, the center celebrated Mother's Day. Our lunch program continues to be a success. Uh, we have seen a little bit of a decrease in participation with our, um, lunch program, so as a reminder to our senior residents, um, we do partner with Gershon's Deli to provide lunch twice a week at a minimal cost. Pre-ordering is required, so be sure to check the website if that is something you're interested in. The Community Programs Committee meetings are held on the first Thursday of every month, so that puts our next meeting at, at 3:00 PM on June 5th in the Schaefer Room, and residents are welcome to attend or follow along on the town's YouTube channel. Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you. Public Works?
Thank you, Supervisor Puccioni. Transportation and Public Facilities, we met on May 5th. That is, um, our Highway Department, and our superintendent there is Ray Smith. The Highway crews continue to work on removal of trees, patching of roads, and cleaning up catch basins. Personnel-wise, we're going to be looking for some individuals in the Parks and Highway Department. Some individuals might be leaving us to go to different endeavors, and, uh, as Superintendent Smith says, he never wants anyone to, you know, say if they're going to bigger, better things, and he encourages them to do that, and we will backfill those positions. Our Park crews are working to clean up the parks, and they've been out mowing, obviously, with the very nice weather we've had, rain and warm weather, lots of mowing going on early this year. The yard waste pickup is now on schedule. That started actually May 9th, so if you're not familiar with when your yard waste pickup day is, you can look on the website or call the Highway Department, and they'll let you know when that is. Ray and Char, Ray and, I'm sorry, Charlie and Ronnie are working on getting the pool ready. Solmin Moskowitz said it's getting very close to opening of the pool, so we're working on getting that to be open soon. The Highway Garage is now officially changed over to summer, right, Ray? He's shaking his head, yes. No more plows. One. He always keeps, always keeps one ready. So we've got all our equipment changed over for the summer. Later this evening, you're going to see some resolutions for some purchase of equipment in the Highway Department and in the Parks Department. We've got our paving list together. Our first eight roads are going to be getting ready to go, and we should be starting to pave in June. Third week of June, thank you. Said second or third week, so it's going to be the third week, and then we're getting some of our equipment cleaned up that we're going to be selling, uh, and surplus. Um, we also, at our meeting, discussed some, excuse me, geese complaints at Blatnik Park and the pond and on the baseball fields. And we discussed the limited mowing of the landfill cap. Residents have been very active in that, and so we're going to have a pilot program for limited mowing of the landfill cap, and we're going to put some signage out there for the residents, because if they come to that park and they look at that, they might think, why is the grass so high? And we're using that for grassland birds. So I also want to take this opportunity to thank not only the Highway, but Department, Police Department, all the town departments for all their help in Niskadee. We do a lot of work with the Niskadee Committee to make sure that the roads are blocked off. Obviously, with the police presence and everything, we have pretty much every department in this town is involved with Niskadee, so thank you to everyone for their participation and help in that. Public Works, that's our Water and Sewer Department, meets on the same day. There, we discussed, uh, filling a junior engineer and engineering tech position. We're still looking for, uh, an individual or possibly two, four of those positions. Attorney items that we discussed are usually sewer extensions. We have a couple of those, Pierce Road, Whitmire. We also discussed our city water contract with the City of Schenectady, and we're getting resolutions together for sewer extensions on Aqueduct Road due to the new sewer line that goes from, uh, Rivers Ledge down to the city wastewater treatment plant. At our meeting, we just discussed some road cuts that the Water and Sewer Department did in March, and we have a resolution appointing a senior water and sewer maintenance worker and tentatively a maintenance worker, and we are getting a midi bid together for a pickup truck. We've got a resolution tonight for the first quarter corporate water and the spring residential and commercial utility bill that will be due May 6th. And we discussed some water adjustment, water bill or utility bill adjustments, and I, I'm going to bring this up just so people are aware that you need to be conscious of the use of your water because you're being billed for that. If you've got a toilet that runs too much or a leaky faucet outside, that can be very costly to you, so we recommend that you kind of monitor your water usage and, and pay attention to those things. Sometimes they can get very high, and, and we don't have any room to maneuver with that because this is water that was used, and it's all metered. Our water treatment plant, the bids for, um, the upgrades that we're making to that and for some software changes are going out. And the recycling center, we have one, uh, transfer station and attendant, and possibly we might be looking for another. Our next meeting is June 2nd at 8:00 AM. Thank you.
Thank you. Economic Development, Historic Preservation, and Environmental Conservation?
Yes, thank you, Supervisor, and good evening. Uh, we meet on the first Friday of every month, so our next meeting is coming up Friday, June 3rd, and that's 8:30 here in the Town Board Room, but it is also hybrid, so you can tune in at home. First, I'm very happy to report that all the EV charging stations in the parks are up and running, so as you're using the riverfront or the bike trail or hiking, kayaking, you can charge your car up at the same time, so we're glad that we got those up and running. Also, I want to thank, uh, the town staff for working so hard on the pedestrian crossing at St. Joseph's and River Road. There is a change order for that, which I, I do support, and the packet tonight you will see that. And I also want to thank the County of Schenectady for their hard work on this project as well. Uh, the intergovernment operations has been working very well with the county and the town, and I think that's very important for all municipalities. Unfortunately, it didn't always happen that way. Also, uh, we had a very good Arbor Day a couple of weeks ago. Was a huge success. We gave away every tree that we had, very nice weather. Was great to see everybody out, uh, enjoying and celebrating the, the town center. People actually got out of their cars this year. It wasn't a drive-through like the past couple of years, so it was people out on the lawn and asking questions about plant care and planning, um, and the like, so it really did go well. Also, if you have any spring pictures, uh, please get them to the Tree Council for publishing on our website. They do have some pretty good prizes to win. Can award, they award prizes for kids under 12, kids 12 to 18, and everybody over 18. So any cameras that you have of pictures of trees in Niskuna, please get them into the Tree Council. They would love to see them. And I would love to see all of you Friday, June 3rd at 8:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Our town is incredibly blessed to have these wonderful spaces to engage in outdoor recreation, and so with the spring weather calling, I am encouraging everyone else to get outside and enjoy. Over the past month, I've had the opportunity to look very closely at our parks and our facilities in town, and I've been working with Assembly Member Phil Steck and preparing grants to obtain funding to, uh, make improvements in our town parks. I am happy to share that our very own Lyons Park is now an official location on the New York State Birding Trail. The New York State Birding Trail is not a physical trail per se, but it connects all of the best birding locations in the region across the state. And bird watching or birding is a multi-generational activity that can be done by anyone, regardless of age, ability, or background, anywhere in New York. And in Lyons Park in particular, it's a very welcoming and inclusive space, um, that many people can access with its wonderful benches and its picnic tables, and you will, you may see a blue heron, most likely will probably see a blue heron, and you just might see a bald eagle. So I want to encourage everyone to visit Lyons Park for birding.
Don't want to interrupt.
No, interrupt away, because we're talking about birding. That's fine.
Birding has exploded big time the past couple of years with COVID. It's really been something that people have gotten out and enjoyed, and, and hopefully they'll do that at Lyons Park.
It really has. And we're not going to be mowing the landfill, and so now we're going to have grassland birds, more birds.
More birds. Add to that? If you go to the local elementary schools, you'll see bird houses outside all, like outside windows, I think of every building. They're teaching the kids at a young age to appreciate the birds and to identify them and how to feed them and help our, it's just beautiful, so that's, it's all great. Spread the word to everyone.
Yeah. I mean, we started out a little heavy, but I'll always try to move us towards walking in the woods, looking at plants, looking at birds, playing in the fields, um, so that's my happy space. We are also partaking, the Niskuna, uh, the folks of, at, here in Town Hall are partaking in the CDT C Bike to Work Challenge. Thank you to our town planner, Laura Robertson, for encouraging and prodding us to participate. We currently have the highest participation rate in Schenectady County, and, um, we think it's a nice showcase of green choices and healthy choices for our staff, so, um, I want to encourage everyone to participate, and that'll be on June 1st. So that's all I have for tonight. All right. Moving on to resolutions. We will start with Resolution Number 2022-1 through 2, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution permanently appointing a person to the position of the county.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Bye-byes. The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-133, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing a memorandum of agreement with CSCA bargaining unit regarding the addition of a senior engineer technician title.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni? Yes. Bye-byes. The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-134, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution amending Chapter 37 of the Town Code of the Town in Niskuna entitled Police Department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Bye-byes. The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-135, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution permanently appointing a sergeant in the Niskuna Police Department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'd like to make a...
I'd like to make a statement that Jeffrey Lashan has done an amazing job for our department during his probationary period. It's very exciting that he's going to be taking a permanent position with us. I've had the honor of working with him on our Police Reform Implementation Task Force and his dedication to that committee and just helpfulness in general and eagerness to be there and donate his time and energy to that committee has been, it's been great. So I'm very excited as a department.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right. Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes. The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-136, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the purchase of a six-wheel dump truck for use in the town's Highway Department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes. The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-137, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing certain budget modifications.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes. The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-138, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the purchase of a utility vehicle for use in the town's Park Department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes. The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-139, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing a temporary amendments to the town's purchasing department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Excuse me, purchasing policy. Sorry.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes. The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-140, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the first quarter corporate utility warrant.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes. The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-141, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing a fence easement agreement.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes. The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-142, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution establishing a standard workday and reporting.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes. The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-143, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution to authorize the advertising for bids for the construction of upgrades to the Niskuna Water Treatment Plant.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes. The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-144, sponsored by Councilmember De La Rata. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution creating a work group to review and potentially redesign the town's official logo.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes. The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-145, sponsored by Councilmember De La Rata. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution to establish a comprehensive development plan committee and to appoint persons to the committee.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Just briefly, I want to thank all of the members of this committee. This is a very important committee. It was done back in 2013, just before I came on the board. And the folks that did that comprehensive plan worked very hard on it and did a very thorough job. The co-chairs of the Comprehensive Development Plan Committee this year are the same as 10 years ago, David Darpino and Dart Strayer. So I know that we are in good hands with those two at the helm. Fortunately, I don't think as much work will be needed, because the plan was so comprehensive, they can just build off of it. But it is very important, because this is how we have, we can keep our neighborhoods in the character that they're in. We can keep our riverfront in a developed and smart economic way. And the same way with opening new retail stores and the like. If you have a good comprehensive plan, you have a roadmap on how you want your town to look in the next 10 years. So I do want to thank everybody that's involved on that committee. It is a lot of hard work, but it's a very important document. Thank you.
Thank you. And a lot of care was taken in terms of selecting the individuals, so I think we're going to have a very good, very strong product. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes. The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-146, sponsored by Councilmember Moskowitz. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution approving the use of a standard license agreement.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes. The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-147, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution adopting the New York Government Finance Officers Association Code of Conduct.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes. The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-148, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the purchase of a mower and related equipment for the use in the town's Parks Department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes. The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-149, sponsored by Councilmember De La Rata. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the supervisor to execute a change order for the engineering and design of certain crosswalks and sidewalks in connection with the Critical Pedestrian Connection Project in the Town of Niskuna.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes. The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-150, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the purchase of a bulldozer for the use in the town's Highway Department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes. The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-151, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the purchase of a one-ton dump truck for use in the town's Highway Department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Yes.
Five ayes. The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-152, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?